Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for April the 23rd, 2013. Roll call?
Sulecio present.
Paul Cimarron present.
And Nick Tulliver present. Chairman's addition order deletions? I have none, only a correction to 3.3. That would be a referral notice from the zoning board of appeals. 1.4, review approved meeting minutes of April the 9th and April the 16th, 2013.
I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes for April 9th, 2013.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes for April 16th, 2013.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll just dive right into the threes. 3.1, reaffirm the federal excess personal property cooperative agreement and the DOD firefighting program cooperative agreement between the town and Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Bureau of Forest Fire Control and Forestry. Continued participation will enable the town to retain excess equipment and vehicles related to forest fire control. Andy?
These are a series of agreements that the fire department has entered into, or the town has entered into with the federal government and the DCR. Makes surplus property available to us and some assistance available to us. And the chief would, they're up for renewal. The chief has asked that the board sign the renewals so that we can continue to get the support and have access to the surplus property. Some of the surplus property is, for instance, some of the forest fighting equipment that we get, some of these old Army surplus vehicles that we've got that we don't use all the time, but they come in handy and it would be tough to justify the purchase otherwise.
And they sure do look cool.
They are kind of cool looking, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion we reaffirm the federal excess personal property cooperative agreement and the DOD firefighting program cooperative agreement between the town, the Townsend, and the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Bureau of Forest Fire Control and Forestry.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, this just has place for you to say.
Oh, well. 3.2, vote to sign annual town meeting warrant out of session for the May 7th, 2013 annual town meeting?
You can actually sign in session if you like.
Oh, sure.
Your choice. The warrant is ready. Not much has changed since you last saw it. It has gone off to legal counsel for their review. They had just a couple of minor language changes. And essentially what you saw a couple of weeks ago when we last looked at it is what's going to be posted in the next few days.
Okay, all set?
All set.
I make a motion we vote to sign the annual town meeting warrant in session for the May 7th, 2013 annual town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.3, review referral notice from the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for gravel removal by Ken Tully and Kevin Smith for property of 56 Brookline Road. Would that be a motion to?
I make a motion we refer to the planning board without comment.
The zoning board of appeals?
And the zoning board of appeals. So noted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
It's just planning board here?
Yeah, I corrected that.
Okay, ANCBA?
Yeah, so Andy, I think that would be a motion to respond with no comment.
Second.
And that was a second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.4, review correspondence from the planning board regarding concerns with the potential purchase of town property at 355 Main Street.
The, I'll just give a little background. The memo from the planning board pretty much speaks for itself, but this has to do with the parcel that we talked about a few weeks ago when Leslie Gabriska came in. It's down next to Nelson Bainbridge property down on Main Street heading west. And the owner or the heir to the estate has talked to the Conservation Commission about deeding a portion of the property to the town for conservation purposes to keep it in perpetuity. And the, part of the idea being to create a green belt that would tie into Squanaco Wildlife Management Area, which is off Turnpike Road. Planning board has raised some concerns about the loss of tax revenue and the ability of the Conservation Commission to manage the property along with all the other property that it has under its control, so.
How much is the tax revenue that we receive from that piece of property?
That, I don't have offhand.
Trick is, is.
I know, but I mean, what's?
It encompasses a house. So what you end up losing the tax revenue is that. Because they're, you know, hacking this part off. So you're talking about unbuiltable land theoretically. All the value of this property I'm sure is encompassed here. And then, of course, it's now an adjacent building lot.
Yeah, what's currently proposed is carving off a building lot that would be either sold or developed by one of the members of the family. So that would be taxed at a higher, at a typical building lot rate. The remainder of the land, the land that is proposed to be given to the town is, as Nick says, not a building lot, would be assessed accordingly and would have a fairly minimal value. It probably wouldn't amount to $1,000 a year in terms of the taxes.
Hey, Andy, let me ask you a question. Does the planning board, I know on a lot of stuff, will submit a report to town floor. Does the planning board in a set of circumstances like this submit a report with these questions or concerns for the floor?
Nothing would prevent the planning board from speaking to town meeting on this issue. On zoning amendments, they are required to present a report to the town meeting, but in a case like this, it is not required. But they would have the, either collectively or individually, they would have the rights of any other individual to speak to the article. So I'm not, I put it on, obviously, because the correspondence came to the board. The board can take some formal action with it or can essentially table it or take no action. There's nothing absolutely required.
It doesn't feel right not to respond because we did talk about some of these things in our meeting.
Perhaps we should respond and say, you know, with an indication that we appreciate these concerns and look forward to seeing them at town meeting?
But also, you know, we discussed the loss of revenue. We had some kind of an estimate at least for that. Do you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's a fellow board and I feel like they deserve a response.
I actually agree with you. I think that we should, I think to do nothing or say nothing to me is just not appropriate. So I, given the explanation that it's relatively minimal, you know, tax revenue lost, $1,000 is $1,000, but it's not the end all be all. I mean, despite the concerns, what's the other concern? Was the tax revenue and then the closing of the wildlife corridor, basically?
No, it would actually be opening a corridor, but it is a concern over the ability of
Management?
Of commission to manage the property.
Okay. What is there to manage the property? I don't understand what.
Well, by definition, it'd be under the care, custody, and control, so there's some implied.
I, that's a tough one. I don't know how many pieces of property they have, what's the total acreage that they, under their control. It's a difficult question to answer at this point.
Actually, I think it brings up an interesting thing that I don't think we've ever talked about. It's like, when is the conservation agent? Do you know what I mean? What's the plateau for what they can handle? Has anybody ever discussed what they have, what they had five years ago, what they have now, what are they going to have? You know, how does that get managed? Is that something that the Conservation Commission manages?
Yeah, for the most part. You know, part of it is economic in nature. When there is more building, there's less, she has less time for land management. In a time like now where there's not a lot of building going on, she's got more time for land management activities. But that's not, it's not a static amount. It's not the same this year as it will be in five years or as it was five years ago, for instance. What I can do is I can get some.
Is this time sensitive, Andy? Somebody get that?
Well, there is an article on the warrant, on the town meeting warrant, to allow the commission to accept this. It seems to have stalled a little bit, but what I was going to suggest is I can get some additional information for the board's consideration on the May 7th meeting, the meeting that we have before the town meeting.
Oh, that sounds good.
So we can vote?
Well, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to vote now. What you could do is just, you'd have some information that you could, you could present to town meeting if the issue comes up.
I mean, I'm six of this and half a dozen of the other on the whole thing anyway. I mean, fine, okay, but, and I'm looking at that piece of land that they're talking about potentially selling as a lot, a building lot. And I'm thinking, wow, if you've got a buffer around that that's conservation, aren't you increasing the value of that piece of property by doing that and therefore increasing what revenue you would get from it, too? I know that it's usually attractive to people to know that there's a buffer around their property, but.
Oh, I don't know if that, presumably, I don't know if the assessor has that, I don't think it's one of the things they put in their little code to up the property. So I don't know if it actually washed through.
I've seen where people are willing to pay more money for.
Well, that's true.
I would think it would weigh into value in terms of the town.
Certainly, from market perspective, it would have, it would have increased value.
Oh, I'm sorry, market and market value and assessment value don't necessarily go together?
They don't necessarily trend exactly.
Okay.
Not always, but sometimes.
Sometimes.
Okay.
Well, the other one valid point that they do raise is they said, could the land still be protected from a deed restriction while still preserving some of the property? So that would kind of be the best of both wills?
Well, the only problem with that is if there's a deed restriction, that limits what you can do with the property. That therefore limits the value of the property.
Okay, that's a good point.
Conservation is bringing it forward. I say it's conservation that needs to answer the questions, you know? If they're raising the questions, then I think it's conservation. They were copied on this correspondence. Hopefully, they're going to reply. Maybe, maybe we could just have Andy see if they are planning on replying to it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd like to have the planning board here to kind of, but can't do that right now.
I think they deserve a response.
All right, and I'll get some tax information from the board as well. And see if we can get an estimate of what that back parcel might bring in.
So is that a tabling for the moment, not taking any action at the moment?
Defer it until the next meeting? Which would be the?
Let's just say take no action tonight.
I'll just put it on for the next meeting.
All right. Being 7016. 2.1, request to reclassify Board of Health Administrator. The Board of Health requests declassification, reclassification of the health administrator. Votes may be taken. Chris, I saw your letter come in with your name on it, so if you want to.
Yeah, I made a copy of a few of the things that Andy has given me and some stuff.
Thank you.
And wrote up on our own. I just want to say thank you for having us back again. Carla is currently classified as a grade three, and she is the Board of Health Administrator. The first page that we put together for this position, and I want to say that a lot of this is about the position itself because Carla's not going to be here forever. And when she leaves that position, hopefully, I'll still be on the board. And I'd like to be able to have a person of a high caliber that can fill that position. And that's part of the reason why I'm here, besides the fact that Carla does do a good job, and I'd like her to be recognized. But I just want to go through some of the responsibilities of the health administrator beyond the, what you might think of the normal septic permits and all of that. We're one of the few towns that has a recycling center that she's in charge of. So the Board of Health Administrator is in charge of the recycling center, which has anywhere from four to six employees. Now, they are not full-time. They are on weekends. So if you look at how the Matrix Plant rates them, they actually basically combined to supervising about one person due to the hours. So I realize that, but there is still a responsibility on the administrator's part to do all of their time cards, do the reviews of those people. And at the recycling center, we have heavy equipment for moving materials. So she is then responsible for ensuring that they're properly trained so we don't end up with OSHA violations and things of that nature. So there's a lot that goes into supervising the people that she has down there. Along with that, there's multiple contracts for disposal of batteries and light bulbs, propane tanks, all of those things. She goes out, solicits bids, tries to get the best number she can. And along with that, so we've got disposal materials. The also, we work with Western and Sampson's, the engineering firm that deals with the landfill that's capped. And we're actually one of the, we're in really good shape in the landfill because of the work that the administrator's done. Deals with all the pumping, maintaining of the fields, reports to the EPA, all those sort of things. So like I say, beyond the normal stuff that most Board of Health people deal with, we've got the added load of that facility and the landfill. Along with the recycling center, and this is something I didn't realize, the maintenance people in town don't do any maintenance to that building. So the administrator's responsible for any plumbing work, any roof work. We actually worked together with Nishoba Tech to get the building remodeled so that we've saved a tremendous amount on fuel. We used to just burn through propane every year up there. So a lot of things there. Her biggest, one of the biggest contract items is obviously the trash, which is $722,000 contract that we have with Shaw's that handles all the curbside. So along with that is lots of angry calls from residents who don't understand the trash program and don't like it if we don't pick up their 18 barrels of trash. So she gets that customer service responsibility to handle for us. There's public health things, being the tobacco control agent, we had to meet very heavily with the school department this fall because there was complaints about children smoking in the high school. And there was a parent that was going to bring a lawsuit if we didn't do something about it. So we've worked with the town and with the police department and.
What was that? Lomster Tobacco Alliance.
Yeah, to help educate and do all those things that we need to do. We deal with confidentiality things with people with mental health issues in town, hoarding, all those wonderful things. And then we also deal with, we get a lot of complaints, renters that have issues with their landlord will come to the board. Those need to be addressed. We've been doing a lot of work with the Pine Ridge Estates in conjunction with Nishoba Board of Health to fix numerous violations. They've been working with the fire department and the building department on that. Other items is the, a lot of grant writing to get materials for the recycling center, saving the town money and allowing us to continue working up there. The center runs on a revolving account that we have to stay essentially as self-sustaining as we can. So whatever we can do through grants and that kind of work really helps us stay afloat. We do help residents with USDA grants when they need septic repairs that are unable to pay for it. And then the one that everybody thinks of is all the Title V, septic inspections, wells, that sort of thing, handling all the paperwork and correspondence for that. So that's kind of a broad brush of what the position currently entails. When, when the grades first came out, she was listed as a three. And we did come to you before on that. She was brought up to a step two in that same position. I went back and looked at all the paperwork and the original position listed her as an administrative assistant that answered, and I, it's in here, the verbiage is that under the administration of the town administrator, which she, you know, she works for the Board of Health, not for the town administrator. And that classification, which is in the packet I gave you, is where that step three came from. Because I don't understand how she can be an administrative assistant if there's no Board of Health administrator. There's other positions in town that they did list them as administrative assistants, but then they also had the administrator that was a grade six. So Carla's in a position now where the Board of Health Administrator, they kept in the same T3 slot where the assistant originally was. And they just said, okay, you're the Board of Health Administrator, but you work at an assistant level. So now in the department head meetings, the Board of Health Administrator sits there as a grade three, the lowest out of anybody, given the vast responsibilities that that position has. And she's meeting and working with people who are at a minimum, a six. And some of those positions, and Carla, correct me if I'm wrong here, so the land use coordinator?
Yes.
So the land use coordinator, the conservation administrator, both who have no employees, sit at a grade six in those meetings. So another piece of the puzzle that Andy gave me when we were looking at this was from the Human Resources Services that did the study. And it was part B on page seven, it was just an excerpt he gave me, but, and it's just a few pages into the packet, it's behind Carla's present job description. And the second paragraph states that the classification tool was used, evaluated and tested for internal equity and comparable worth in rating positions. So what I'm asking you is that, I don't believe that the Human Resources Services had a proper understanding when they originally classified the position. And she now, or the administrator in the future, sits with other administrators of similar boards in town and yet is paid significantly less and is much further down on the town's matrix. I went and I looked at, Carla got me the rating matrix from the town server that was.
Yes, yes, it's on the public share server.
So it, and it's the system that Human Resources uses to rate all the employees. And if you go through, it gives you all the criteria, the points of how they're rated. But the one thing they don't have is the final sheet that tells you where you're supposed to be as a grade. And we've asked for, Carla asked Andy for that, and we haven't gotten that. And then my other question was, I would just like to see the original rating of how they placed her at a three, which apparently is also unavailable. So I'm not a Human Resources person, but I would think that where the town paid $15,000 to this company to complete a study and give the town the results of how they classify each position, which was supposed to be kept so future positions could be reevaluated, and now none of that data is available. It really, it makes it hard for me to make my case because they said she's a three, and that's fine, that's, they're professionals, that's what they do. But now there's no documentation as to how they arrived at. It's like a kid in school. You've got to show your work. You just can't give an answer and not back it up. So I know the answer's going to be they did their work and they're, this is what we hired them for, and they put her to three. But at a very least, as the chairman of the Board of Health, I think that I have the right to see how they arrived at that conclusion and how they rated her. So what I'm asking, you know, if you don't want to have to do a lot of research and work, we're asking for, to move her to a level six, step one, so that she is equitably compared to and compensated, just as all the other department heads are that perform similar or less functions than she does.
You're asking to go to step six?
Yes. No, to, no, to level six, step one. From a three, are you a 3.2 or 3.3?
This July, I would have been a 3.3.
So you're asking to go from 3.2 to 3.6?
3.3 to 6.1.
We don't have the whole thing here. That's okay.
Chris, let me ask you a question. As far as, with respect from, you know, a year ago till now, and of course, you know, I understood from your letter that there was some, you know, some more information has been gotten. Or, you know, there's been now a year to, you know, evaluate this process. My question is, because of course, you know, what's different now as opposed to what was a year ago? Just because I'm, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, I'm just curious.
When we came before, the board before, and the question came up, we realized that they had put her to three. And we were told, this isn't about comparing, when we sat here, this isn't about what the guy next to you, what he does. This is about how your position got classified. And I, and I took that for what it was worth. Okay, so they put her to three, but she should clearly be above that, was what we were trying to do. But then as time goes by, the last meeting you had, you worked with, I forget what position it was, but you worked with another position to be reclassified. And I was under the impression that after you went through all the work last time and sat and heard everybody's, you know, issues with whatever grade they were, my impression was that that is what it is. You know, things are closed, it's done. But then when I see and I look on your agenda that you're looking to reclassify other positions, then I said, well, you know what? Before I was under the impression that the matrix is what the matrix is, but as other positions are looked at again, I just thought that I should bring it forward. Plus, we have a whole year of showing what she, you know, what the position actually does and what it entails. So we've been keeping track over the past year of, okay, what, what does the position really do and what do we need? And what do we need it to do to be effective, to, to do a good job for the town?
Andy, and of course, Andy, I'm just thinking out loud, and again, you know. What does HRS give us as far as, what they charge us if we said, hey, take another peek?
We, we could certainly have, have them do that. I don't know how much it would.
Well, yeah, no, that's what I'm trying to sort of, in my own mind, is, you know, what's different now as opposed to the last go around? So if we look at it again, it's like, hey, listen, you know, you missed X, Y, and Z, because I think a couple of other previous positions. And again, I, you know, I hate putting fingers on stuff, but, you know, things were missed.
Yeah.
Meaning, what was missed in the original analysis? So when we look again, it's like, oh, hey, you know, you got this, but.
I think if, if we just had their report, the full report from the first time, that we've already paid for, and that the town already paid $15,000 for, that would answer a lot of your questions. But I kind of call in the company, and they wouldn't answer their phone. And the one that's on the server, they chop off the last page, which is the one you really need. So, I just find it hard to believe that, you know, taxpayers in town, everybody paid their money to get this done, to make it fair and equitable. But now, nobody can see the results of how they achieved those, those answers, because.
I, I hear what you're saying. I have a question for Andy. That last page that they're referring to, is that the thing that HR doesn't have to?
Is that proprietary?
That's a proprietary, that's what I thought. It's like their formula, that their formula way of doing things. Because this came up before, as to why that wasn't made public.
This is a unique situation.
And what we got for an answer was, it's covered by its being proprietary. Kind of like a pattern, a pattern.
Privilege, privilege.
theoretically, if we got it, somebody else could start an evaluation company and use that.
But that's not what it is. The, the piece that, that's missing is, they give you their whole evaluation criteria and how it works.
But that was the answer that we got when we asked about that.
Okay. This is their whole classification and rating manual. They give you everything in here of all of the 14 points that they rate. All of, this is all public knowledge. There's nothing proprietary about this. They give you point by point, every degree of a physical skill and effort, how you rate the person. And it comes down to the very end, they have, they have in here their worksheets, how they do it. So they have a sheet here that they go in and you look at all of the things. They have all of their weighted numbers, okay? So however, whichever degree you're at in each category, you total up whatever your score is, okay? And once that's done, they give you the worksheet, because they have two reviewers do it. Everybody signs it, and then page 22, which is missing, tells you what grade you're in based on your number. And that's the piece they've taken out. So it's nothing proprietary about how they do their work. They give you everything. It's just for some reason, you can't see how your employee ranked on that scale.
Well, what exactly is the nature of proprietary agreements then?
That's, that's what I don't understand, because that is the information that people would need if they wanted to steal it to start their own company. The one thing that's missing is for an employee or this supervisor to look and say, my employee does these certain things, these are the ratings they were given, okay. Where do they fall on the chart now? Because, I actually started this because I had the old one from 99, which at the end gives you a range that depending on what, depending on what, this is what they took out. So, here's your point assignments. And then on the last page, they tell you, okay, if your score is in this range, you're a level five. If you're in this range, you're a level six, and so forth. Now, I realize these numbers are probably different from the current plan. They've changed some stuff. But this is the page that's missing that nobody can see. And I can't see, and nobody else in the town can see any of these sheets. You know, where do they rate these people, and how do they judge the positions they were in? So, when they say it's proprietary, I find that hard to believe that the one page that's basically meeting this.
That's exactly what we were told, though.
People don't always tell the truth, right? And if you pay somebody $15,000, I, I would think that that, because they even list it, they, they list it on the cover sheet of the report that it's supposed to be in there. They don't list it that this is proprietary information, you don't get it. That sheet is specifically missing so that you can't go back as an employee or a supervisor and find out how your person ended up there. So I don't think we should spend any more money to have them come back. I think they should provide us the information that we paid them for.
That's one thing. I have another. I remember when this came back, and I remember looking at the job description. And if you don't mind my saying so, the job description isn't quite how you described it.
Okay.
Okay, that's part of, I think, what the problem is. I think that probably you're accurate in saying that HR didn't get all of the details. And I think you've, it sounds like you've done a good job over the year of documenting the kinds of things that are specific to that position. I, I jotted a couple of them down. It sounds like there are some special skills and knowledge that this position requires that I don't see anywhere in the job description. Grant-writing skills, or experience writing grants. Those are the kinds of things that you would put in a resume. They are also the kinds of things that belong in a job description, if there's something that's part of that job. Dealing with HIPAA, another big thing, okay? Knowledge of HIPAA, compliance with HIPAA, that's, that's a lot of responsibility right there. Those were not outlined in the job description. If nothing else comes of this in terms of HR, I would say that that job description really needs to be looked at in light of what some of the things that you mentioned are. And, and it, it needs to be spelled out in there, because if you don't spell those things out, the job can sound rather generic.
Yeah.
And it does sound administrative. You know, just general administrative kind of, kind of work. But then, when I heard you describing it, it, it sounds a little bit different than that. It sounds like, wait a minute, in order to do that, you have to have some background in particular areas. But as I said, they're not spelled out in there. I, I mean, I'm inclined, just having heard what you've said, to, to definitely look at, at regrading this. What that grade should be, I, I'm, I'm not sure yet, because I guess I share the same problem you have. Okay, now we've got this situation, how do, how do we?
How would we be fair in analyzing it?
How do we do that? And, and I don't know how we do it. I'm usually pretty good at thinking on my feet, but right now, it's like, okay, so what do we do next? I mean, I, I like the specifics that you, you brought out, and, and they're really important to bring out, because they belong in that job description. And if, if it means that someone who's an administrator in one department can't necessarily go into the other department because of those special skills and knowledges, and knowledge that's required.
I mean, even beyond the, the specifics that you mentioned, just the position as a whole with the, all the items that are covered in the, in the job description that's on, you know, on file, the official one, it still deserves to be at the same level as the other level sixes.
It doesn't sound anywhere near the same to me when I read it. It just, it, it sounds, it sounds much broader, general.
Okay.
And, and more, you know, more vague in those, in those situat, in those parts. But it might just be my interpretation. I mean, that's just, you know, I started looking at it earlier and I said, hmm. But now, you know, I've heard some other stuff, so it kind of adds some context to it. Any suggestions?
I have some of the same, she has some of the same concerns you do, Sue, in terms of looking at, you know, how does the job description, and is the job, to what degree is the job description inaccurate? Or is it not an accurate reflection of what is actually being done? So I would like to see some resolution to that. And I.
Well, I guess.
I think we should go back, I think we should go back and, 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 and look, and actually write down what's, what's different. You outlined some of them, I, you know. And I, I guess I'd like to see some coordination with, with, with Human Resources Services and see, you know, have, take another look at this, and, and, and based on what is actually being done versus, you know, you know, what, what, how, how is that, how is that current classification wrong?
Now, are you, are you looking at the?
The one that Carla looked at.
Okay. Now, I guess, and when we look through the, the essential functions that they list in there. Sorry, I didn't bring you it up. So this is the second page. So, it's on the second page. And, because this, this actually, we helped work on, and it carries a lot of the things over from the original job description that, that Carla applied for. So in the first paragraph, it, you know, it talks about, you know, the management, monitoring, and supervising of the tax, and all the administrative support for the board, the recycling center, and the landfill. You know, researching, requesting, and managing, supplying information to the board. You know, liaison to the public, working with federal agencies. All the various master general law codes that the position works with, to comply with. You know, goes through recycling center and concerns there.
So if I, if I saw this on a resume, okay?
Yeah.
The way that it's worded, I'd say it's an administrative position.
Okay.
Okay?
So, I guess what?
The one, all right, for example, receives all applications and fees associated with the Board of Health. Somebody comes in, hands an application and a fee to this, to this position.
Yeah.
Is that all that's required?
They review the application for completeness and it grants the state and local regulations.
Well, you're, you're reviewing it for completeness adherence. What kinds of decisions get made by the person?
Okay.
Okay? Someone who has responsibility usually has decision-making authority.
Okay.
Rejects applications that are incomplete. Do, do you know what I'm saying? Accepts or rejects. Maintain, you know, I, I can have my, my granddaughter maintain my files. That doesn't mean that she's doing something with them, that, that, that they're being classified. What knowledge is necessary in order to sort them in, in a different way and bring certain ones to your attention as, as a board? So it, it's kind of like, there, there's discernment necessary, there's decision-making necessary. I don't see that kind of thing in here. And, and it doesn't mean that that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it, it doesn't accurately, in my estimation, describe that kind of a position. So I think there's work that, that needs to be done here. If, when you're interviewing with HR, for example, you say it like this, it's going to be written like that. She needs to, to know about this law, this law, this law. It, it's just, it's different.
Yeah.
And then if you took that and, and you wanted to write a resume so that she could go somewhere else, that resume should, should accurately reflect all of the kinds of things that you're responsible for in that position.
But is it a matter of solely, because I've looked at some?
The way you're gonna interpret it. See, so, I think, you know what I think it is? I think you guys are too close to it. I think you read it and have a different connotation of it than someone picking it up and reading it might. Because you know what's involved. You know, and you did a good job of digging out specifics. It's those specifics that I don't see in here. And, and I mean, that's just cosmetic, but.
If it's cosmetic, is it just merely the need to?
I think we need to beef it up.
To rewrite the position, but that you can see the level that that position is at?
See, I don't know how we do that. How do we do that?
I think it goes back to being able to see the, the study that we paid for.
Well, one of the, one of the concerns that HRS had with, with giving up the, the rating sheet, and we, we talked about it last year at this time as we were going through all those appeals, was it's, and it sort of goes to what you just said, that you're too close to it, and the employee is too close to it, and the department head or the board or supervising, supervising committee is too close to it. It's easy to take, to take the form and pick it apart and, and look at it and say, and I'm not talking your, your position specifically, so don't, don't take any of this the wrong way. To look at it and say, but I procure services, so I should get the max on, on the procurement. And I maintain all the, the files for the, the board or the committee or the department. And sometimes we're in litigation, so I'm responsible for confidential information, and I supervise volunteers. And so I should get, I should get the max points for, for supervision. And so it's, it's hard, it's, a lot of the positions that we have are very broad, and they, they, they blend or they, they bleed over beyond an administrative position into some management aspects. And some of that can change. Five years from now, it could be a completely different Board of Health that has a whole set of different demands on, on the administrator. And, and so, and part of it is just, is the, the interest and the aptitude of the individual to take on or not take on various tasks. In terms of the job description, you know, that, that can be revisited at any time. It was, it was reviewed a year ago, or a year and a half ago, as we were going through this, through this process. And I think that, in fact, I think initially that HRS had changed the title to Board of Health, and maybe you said this earlier, Chris, and I apologize, Board of Health Administrative Assistant or something like that. And, and that was one of the concerns, I think, that the board had, and Carla, that you had. But I think in general, the, the comments that the board offered up, or that, that you offered up, were incorporated into the. you offered up were incorporated into the, into the job description.
So...
So, how do we...
The job description always characterizes Board of Health Administrator?
No. No, not in that, not in their plan.
Not in their plan, but it always was a change during the plan. It always was a Board of Health Administrative Position. When they did this study, they completely changed the job description and put it into an administrative assistant category. It was not an administrative assistant job.
They were assuming it was administrative assistant to the board.
I'm sorry?
They didn't, they actually didn't say to the board, they said to the town administrator. So, that begs, my other question is, how can you have an assistant?
You said that initially.
Yeah.
How can you have an assistant if you don't have an administrator?
Yeah.
You are the administrator, right? That's the thing.
But again, we've got a ZBA Administrative Assistant, we've got a Planning Board Administrator, those are, those are the similar positions.
There's no administrator by the one of those.
Those, those are the positions that are comparable.
Excuse me, if I may, please? The, the role of the Administrative Assistant in the planning and in the ZBA, they work a certain number of hours as clerical, like a level three, and then they do their administrative work, which brings them up to a level six. So, they actually have two different levels. The same job, and that's what you actually combined the other day for the Conservation Commission. You took the administrative clerical role out of it and just let her be an administrator.
I think what the Planning Board and the ZBA, they split the land use spot.
Right. Right. So, they, they share the land use coordinator role, and then they each have the administrative piece as...
So, who, who is the Administrative Assistant and who is the administrator of the ZBA and the Planning Board, isn't it?
Well, I think, what, the land use coordinator, and then those two sort of report to themselves because there is no separate Z, land use coordinator?
Well, it, it, it is certainly an imperfect creation over there. And I, I, you know, it, it is what it is. On the, on the administrative level, they report to the respective boards, and on the land use level, they report to the town administrator. The, the conservation position, when it was, when it was two individuals holding those two positions. You had the conservation agent, and then you had the conservation administrative assistant. The administrative assistant reported to the agent. Those two positions have, have been combined, and the agent now handles all of the administrative pieces as well as the professional pieces. And that's, you know, there's, there's a fairly broad technical knowledge that goes along with, with that position, for instance.
But is that written into its description? Or could Sue's granddaughter do that job?
No, it's written into the job description.
Have you know, my granddaughter is very smart.
But, and, and I've, and the head librarian was nice enough to give me the job description that she did to help get the children's librarian to a level five. And there's no, they, they read very similar in general in nature as the way they did all of these positions, because they always put in there that this is the very minimum or this doesn't preclude other skill sets or other activities to be asked of the employee. So, to, to...
Maybe there's another job for me somewhere.
Yeah. But to, to circle around to the whole thing about this being equitable, children's librarian is at a, at a level five. She supervises one person, not responsible for, she does write grants, but there's no, she doesn't handle, you know, a $700,000 budget, isn't responsible for building maintenance. So, I mean, that's, that's one example. And just like I say, the other, the other administrators in town that answer to a board, I, I can't see how in good faith you can look at, is the Board of Health somehow less important or, you know?
No.
Than, than...
That's not the case at all.
No.
So, there needs to be some, some sort of equity. And when you were asking, Andy was nice enough to give me Article Five, which says that you guys can review and make a classification change. You guys get the final vote.
We know, thanks.
They heard that before.
So, we're, we're, we're on the last step, so if you're wondering how it would go, they spell it out there.
I have to admit, I'm in a kind of quandary here, I don't know what to, I want to be fair to Carla, and I also want to be fair to the integrity of the classification plan as a whole.
I think the job description needs to get...
Is the issue?
I, I, I agree. I think the job description needs to be...
Revised?
More.
Updated?
Well, call out the extra special things that aren't there.
To, to, to make sure that those things are incorporated.
What about the process, assume that that process is completed, the job description's been updated, can this be submitted to HR for a reevaluation of the job description based on the most current slash accurate description of the jobs and responsibilities and all, et cetera?
Well, because that's another part of the thing, too, is, like sort of Bob said, it's like, I mean, I don't know.
I have another suggestion. But you're leaving.
Make a controversial decision and leave. What am I about? Throw your pardons out the window. You know what? They did a good job, they did their research, the Administrative Assi- the Administrator should be a level six, just like all the other administrators.
The thing I'm feeling badly about is I didn't do due diligence. I knew that you were coming before the board, but I did not realize that, you know, that you had something specific in mind, which is the, the level six. Because I would have looked at those job descriptions...
Okay.
Prior to the meeting. Because I'm feeling like I don't have, I haven't had a chance to look at those, to, to review those.
I can be here until...
You know, I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I think...
You know, somebody will be here.
As I've stated before, I think the, the, the job description should be updated. I don't think there's any question about that.
No.
I'm just, I just have some, just, one thing jumped out at me is on, on, on grade, grade five, under that, they have, okay, you've got children's librarian, one of them, but at the bottom of that, you have working foreman in cemetery and parks who supervises people on an ongoing basis.
Yeah.
And you're saying that this position is above that in terms of supervision?
No, not, not in supervision.
Well, that's part of the rationale that you're using to make it a six.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, you know, it, it seems like a bridge too far kind of thing. And, and all I'm saying is, that particular aspect of what you're saying, I'm not saying she doesn't supervise people, but it's not apples to apples in terms of supervisory responsibilities, even to a, to, even to one position on the five. So, that's all, I'm, I'm just look, trying to look at that objectively and saying, does it need to be updated? Yes.
Yeah.
But is it a six? I'm not convinced of that.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be fair and, and, and look at it and say, you know, what, what's the right thing to do here? And I don't want to rush to judgment. I'm just saying that, that aspect of it, when I was reading through the positions, that, that was one, one position that, that didn't quite ma- match up in terms of, just my own personal...
And, and that's true, because there's, there's 14 factors that weigh in, because I'm sure there's other positions that are a six or above that, you know, they may have no supervisory, but, you know, if you're, if you're a fireman and you might not come home, you deserve to get paid more money than, and so it's not just the supervision piece.
I'm not saying, I said it was one aspect. I didn't say it was the only aspect. I'm just saying it was one aspect. So, I'm still forming where, where, where the, where the, I feel the right position is. And, and I, I, I think the fairest thing to do is to, is to rewrite the job description, submit it, and based on that, and now, I, I don't agree with you that you need to have the proprietary information to, I mean, I, I understand your position, you're entitled to that opinion, I get that. But there's a reason it's proprietary.
Is, can I just...
Of course.
Can we see, I guess my question is, okay, maybe that, that scale, which I don't believe because they gave it to us the last time around, why isn't the information available for the service that we paid for? We paid them to classify our health administrator, and they come back and say, she's a three, just trust us. And I know that there's other boards and other employees in town that have the very same issue. So, if anything else came out of this, at the very least...
And that's why there were two people who, who, of all the appeals that were done, there were some adjustments that were made.
Yes.
Now, not as many as people would have liked, obviously.
Yeah.
But it's not like we sat here and rubber stamped everything that HR said. Guess that's not a fact.
Oh, I know, I know, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, it's not like we're, this is the Bible, and we're not, we're saying we can't change anything. All I'm saying is, any more information, personally.
Now, who would, who would rewrite, would, would the board be responsible for rewriting the position, or how would that process work?
Why can't you all do it? Why can't you sit together, just like you're doing right now, and go through those 14 things and everybody being in agreement, and then you can ship it off to the HR people and they can tell you on their prioritized or their, their confidential document what grade it is? And that way, everybody in the room is in, in the same agreement with what those 14 steps are and what degree those should be at.
Well, the other thing is that we really haven't talked about how are we going to do this stuff going forward, anyway? This is kind of a, this can be like a trial one. Not to say that it's not important, but do you know what I mean? It's kind of like...
You mean about the process?
What I, yeah, because what I don't want to have to do is run to HRS every time something comes before us. We need to have a process. We, we need to figure out what is that process and how are we going to do this going forward? Because I don't want to have to go to HRS for that every time. You know, it's like, we, we should know how to do that. We should figure out how to do that, and we haven't done that. You know, it's something left for us to do, so... It's on our to-do list.
Well, in a way, you did it last year with the appeals.
Well, yeah, but, but that was a little bit, it was still conversational. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, we have a method that we're using, okay? There, there wasn't a sheet to fill out or questions to ask to figure out where does everyone stand on it, you know?
Actually, there was, in the very beginning.
No, no, I, I don't mean that. As we go through the reevaluation of positions...
Okay.
Okay? We, we don't have a process in place for doing that. This is what this is pointing out to me, anyway. We don't have, who's responsible for fixing a job description? I don't know. Is it the board to whom that job reports? Is it a, a committee? Is it a group that we bring together that we call our HR review group? I don't know. I'm just, I'm saying these things because we don't have that solution. I think where this particular job is concerned, you've convinced me that, number one, the job description needs to be enhanced, okay? Number two, it's probably more than a three. You've convinced me of that. Where exactly it is, I'm not ready to say yet. I want to review the other job descriptions because it's been a while.
Okay.
Okay? But, and, and I hate to put you off, but I don't feel like I'm doing what I need to if I don't do that.
Due diligence, if you will.
Exactly. Okay? So, perhaps may, we should set up a work session where we can kind of just not talk about this one specifically, but more in terms of process, and at the same time, do that due diligence and review.
Well, we have to, we still have to, I think.
Review things.
This particular question.
Yeah, and, and come back at the next regular meeting.
When is the next regular?
I'm saying that specifically because I think the next meeting is the meeting prior to the town meeting, on the seventh, so I'd be talking the one after that.
So, you're not going to be here then?
See this?
He was, he, I can see he's on my side, yeah.
He can speak as a, as an audience member if he's recognized.
The reason he's smiling so, so much, so frequently...
Is because he's not going to be here.
This is his last meeting, unfortunately.
Well, actually, despite my, you know, colleagues would indicate, they actually tried to get me to learn why I'm sharing the sunglasses for my last meeting, but decided that part was not a good idea.
Of course, we could write him in.
Are you getting a lot more than what you got here?
But I will say that, as Sue's, I agree with her.
Okay.
And I've already stated that.
Thank you.
That I, I, I think the job description obviously needs, that's, that's, that's quite clear.
Okay.
And, and I'm open to reevaluating the position. It's just, I want to be fair to Carla and the, and the Board of Health and to the other people relative to where they're at, and, and trying to come to some reasonable agreement about...
And then we have to make some decisions, and we have to make some decisions, too.
Right, we have to make, so, I, 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 I mean, I, I, how else to put it?
No, that's fine, I just, I, I, I'd just like to be on the next regular meeting, and the, the Article Five does, you know, the good part and bad part about being in charge is that, the way Article Five is written, that you guys, it falls on you.
We know that. That's why we get to be the big bucks.
The part about being in charge is that you're in charge.
We get the same big bucks that we get at the board.
Big buck, singular.
You make like a hundred times...
Yeah, I won't get my three dollar check.
Who is that tonight?
Oh, I want a golf check, right?
Do we...
My question, Andy, is this job description in a Word doc or...
Yeah.
I mean, theoretically, I mean, is there any opposition from the board if we, you know, give Chris a copy of just this job description, the Word doc, and they could take a stab at fixing what's missing or highlighting what's missing or, you know?
Yeah, we can do that.
Give him the first stab.
And then in italics or whole face, whatever. That makes sense?
That sounds good.
Start from there and, you know, bring it to the next meeting and...
Do you want to try and meet before the next selectmen's meeting? Do some sort of work group?
Like as a work session?
You go to the work session.
What?
You can go to the work session.
Yeah. Was, was that something that would work, and then that way, we don't have to bore the public with hours of this?
Who could be bored at this?
I know.
I can hear the snoring in the distance.
So, it would be, what, the 14th is a, a free, non-scheduled Tuesday? Why don't we say...
Well, whatever it is, whatever meeting we have, we'll be a public...
Why don't we say, why don't we say...
Okay, yeah.
I mean, we can't meet and...
Secrecy?
That doesn't work out.
I don't want a thousand counts?
Yeah.
Do you want to say the 14th for a work session?
Well, is, are we going to have a meeting for that, just that?
You don't even have to get dressed up.
Yeah, how are we going to get the table?
I mean, if you want to just do it in a regular meeting, that's fine with me, I just didn't know how you...
We have to do things, we just can't schedule a meeting and...
Sometimes I think something like that deserves its own, its own session, so you can just kind of concentrate on that one target, you know?
If you're going to try to come up with a process for how you would, how you deal with reclass.
Yeah, I think it's a work session.
Not only does it affect this position, but there are other, obviously potentially other positions that we'll have to go through, I hate that word, to process again, but we need to be systematic about it and not make it look like we're sort of freelancing kind of thing. That's just not the way it works. I don't, I don't like doing that. I don't, I don't like to give that impression even. You know? I think we need to be fair, totally fair about it, totally transparent.
Somebody can warn the folks that are vying for next position, on the 14th, we're going to have...
Yeah, I figured somebody would have been here to...
Trial by, by a work, work session. Okay?
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
That's fair.
Hate to put you off, but...
It's better than a no.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, we'll see you on the 14th?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Congratulations on your show.
I'm just taking a break, just taking a break.
Take this, thanks.
Oh, hey, Jim?
See you guys tomorrow.
See ya.
Bye. Chris, I think I got some of your goodies here, too. I know. Got on till after the 14th.
Take care. Have a good night.
Moving on. 3.5. Review proposed Alzheimer's Association Annual Memorial Ride on July the 13th, 2013.
This is really mostly an informational piece. The Alzheimer's Association does a fundraising ride every year. It starts down at Devon's, and comes up through Groton and Shirley, and just nips the eastern corner of Townsend on Proctor Road and Haynes Road, and then bumps over into Pepperell, and then up into Hollis. But they have asked for, the board's okay. The police chief has already spoken to them and has given his blessing to it, but they would like to have the board approve it as well. It's on July 13th of this year.
Did you have to read the letter, or is that too long?
No, there's no need to read the...
No need to read the letter?
No need to read the letter.
Okay. I don't, I think it's a great cause and a worthwhile event to support, so I don't have any problems with supporting the...
What are we doing?
Proposed route.
Just to approve the ride as the portion that goes through Townsend.
You could still move that.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion, we approve the proposed Alzheimer's Association Annual Memory Ride on July 13th, 2013.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.6. Approve the award of the Maria L. Lane Scholarship. Moats may be taken. Andy, do you have...
I do. We always do this as an anonymous thing, just so we don't ruin the surprise for the recipient.
You sit in. Okay. Just read the...
Make a motion to award it, and name held silent.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the award of the Maria L. Lane Scholarship.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 3.7. Review the request of town administrator to apply for admission to Suffolk University Graduate Certificate Program.
I've been approached from, by Suffolk University. They're running a graduate certificate program in local government, and they've offered, reached out to me to encourage me to apply for this certificate program. The, I haven't decided yet that I can manage the time, there's a fair time commitment, it's the equivalent of five graduate courses, but I would like at least to submit the application before the deadline, which is next week, and then make a decision in the month or so after that, before I have to accept whether to, whether to take advantage of it or not. So I'm not looking for any concrete commitment from the board now, but just the permission for me to apply for admission to the program. It's a program that's geared towards local government managers, department heads, administrators, similar positions. It deals with budgeting and HR, leadership, things like that. I think it would be certainly beneficial to me, and also, I think, very beneficial to the community for me to have that broadened skill set.
So at this point, there's no financial commitment on the part of the town?
That's correct.
I'll follow it. Motion? Make a motion, we approve the request of the town administrator to apply for admission to Suffolk University Graduate Certificate Program.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 3.8. Town administrator's performance appraisal discussion. Andy, did you want to talk a little bit? Do you want me to talk, or you talk, or...
Somebody talk.
Okay.
Some talk, other than me.
All right. Basically, you know, there's a lot of discussion, you know, that we've heard regarding the town administrator's review process. I know that there's been some, you know, attention been drawn to the town charter regarding, you know, whether or not the town administrator's annual review is required by the charter, and of course, there's been some debate off of that. Andy, did you want to go from there?
Yeah, I spoke with Labor Council recently about this, and just as a, to back up a second, my contract, my initial contract, and I think Greg Barnes' contract, said that the board should do an evaluation annually, but if the board fails to do it, then it's presumed to be a positive evaluation. The charter says the town, the Board of Selectmen shall evaluate the town administrator's performance on an annual basis. So there's a bit of an apparent conflict there. I spoke with Labor Council, and his opinion in a matter like the clause in the charter is that it is not mandatory, but it is rather directory, more that the board should do an evaluation. There's no penalty for not doing it. You're not going to get impeached, or, you know, it doesn't negate my contract, or anything like that, so... So he believes, it's his opinion, that the board is not required to do the performance evaluation.
Yeah, Andy, charter, does it say all employees shall be evaluated, or town administrators should be evaluated?
It says it in the, it says the town administrator should be evaluated, and it says that in the town administrator section.
Okay.
That the board shall hire a town administrator, blah, 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 shall annually evaluate. In our personnel rules, we say that all employees should be evaluated annually.
I know where I was coming from before was, the contract said that, you know, failure to do an appraisal meant it was satisfactory. As far as I was concerned, then that was fine, you know? So I didn't, you know, I didn't think we had to, and now, you know, Mr. Jenkins is also saying it's not mandatory, according to his opinion. I mean, I say just share the opinion with anyone who's...
Well, it's now public record.
Concerned, so, yeah, enter it into the minutes. I mean, he certainly, it looks like he's...
Well, and I'll quote...
Quoting several...
Well, he cites a number, you know, substantial amount of case law, and basically, and I'll quote from, I'll read from the letter, "On the basis of foregoing, it's my opinion that the language in the charter is directory and not mandatory. The language is meant to provide guidance to the board and is dealing with the town administrator, but not, does not mandatorily require that action." And again, it's a legal opinion. That being said, it's available to all who have concerns or questions regarding Sam. It certainly, you know, doesn't discredit or disvalue, or even void the contract. It also doesn't state specifically in the town charter specifically the method of which performance is, or what constitutes a performance evaluation. There's some train of thought out there that by executing and entering into another contract, that in itself is a, you know, an affirmative statement regarding, you know, the evaluation process, meaning if the job wasn't satisfactory, that would be addressed at that time. So I don't know if that, you know, I mean, in a way constitutes a performance evaluation. There's certainly one set of thought, or one train of thought that it does, to the extent that it's even required.
Mr. Chair, personally, I think no matter what this board says, I think there will be people who will not be satisfied with that explanation, and I don't think anything we can do or say is going to ultimately change that. So it's my opinion that the legal opinion is valid, and I think that's really all that needs to be said. I don't, I don't, we could stand on our head, and it's not going to be enough, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to personally change what we've done.
Okay.
That's why I don't make a vote about it.
I don't have any problem with just leaving things the way they are. I mean, I signed the contract knowing that it had that clause in it. I wouldn't have signed it if I didn't think that it was satisfactory, so it's moot question as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. I don't know that this even requires a vote on anything. Okay. 4.1. Vote to approve the hiring of a truck driver at the Highway Department?
The Highway Superintendent, Ed Kugler, and the foreman, Keith Laterno, interviewed a number of applicants recently for the vacant position of driver over at the Highway Department, and they have put forth the name Luke Mosher. I did bring Luke's resume, but Luke is a resident of town.
He is a resident of town?
Yeah, and Ed and Keith felt that he was the best of the applicants that they, that applied and that they interviewed, and they're recommending his hiring.
All right. I make a motion, we approve the hiring of Luke Mosher as a truck driver at the Highway Department?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4.2. Vote to reappoint Joseph Mazzola as Veterans Services Officer for a term from April 1st, 2013 to, excuse me, March 31st, 2014.
I make a motion, we vote to reappoint Joseph Mazzola as Veterans Services Officer for a term from April 1st, 2013 to March 31st, 2014.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5.1. Board of Selectmen updates and/or reports.
I just wanted to acknowledge the chairman, Mr. Nicholas Alheimer, and thank him for his services on the board. I've enjoyed working with him the past three years, and wish him well in all his endeavors, and sorry to see you be leaving, but I understand, and...
It's a pleasure.
Oh, hey.
I'll second that.
Oh. Any further discussion? Now's the time.
Is this really your last meeting?
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
Unless you want to have a special work session next year.
No, 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 that's okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm starting to follow up on that. Of course, three years went by a whole lot quicker than I had thought. You know, of course, you never appreciate how long and hard it took to get here. Of course, it went by a lot faster than I thought. I knew that when I had originally decided to do this, I'd probably make some friends, make some enemies, and make some enemies out of friends. And I think I've done all of that. Of course...
That's how you know you've done a good job.
I know, right? You know, I sort of want to say that, you know, it's always, you know, I've always felt truly honored to sit here, and I hope nobody ever thinks I ever took it for granted. I also, you know, want to acknowledge that, you know, right or wrong, every decision I made, it's what I thought was right. May not have, in retrospect, maybe wasn't the best, but, you know, I believe it was the right decision. And I hope things are, you know, I think, I hope things are better for me having been here than having me not be here. I mean, I don't know. Never.
I think they have, I think they are, I can speak. I've served with a lot of people on this board, and I think you've done an excellent job.
Super job. Going to miss you, man.
Yeah, I, um...
But you know what? You're still young.
Yeah, I, um...
It doesn't, never say never, okay?
And we'll be here every other Tuesday, if you want to come visit.
But, but, you think about how quickly the last three years have gone, and the next 20 or so are going to go just as fast, and you're still going to be young, you know? So you never know what's in front of you.
Well, and that's sort of the fun part, like I told somebody else, and, you know, I sort of, you know, took a little, took a little laugh at this, but, you know, in the, because of course, having sat on the planning board for eight years before this, I've sort of come to the realization that there's a finite amount of people involved in, you know, town politics and town government, and we all, it's like a play. We all just change parts, we all just change seats, and it's the same, you know, bunch of people, we just change seats. So, you know, the way that was, you know, sort of, you know, rationalizing that in my own mind was... Perhaps you haven't seen the last of me?
Oh, I'm sure we haven't. I hope we have.
Yeah, I think you don't come to a place every two weeks for 11 years, and not sort of have a, you know, I know the joke I always have at the office is, you know, town hall's my second home, so since I was 24, every other week, I was in here for something. So it'll, I don't know, something, something, something will be different, and I'll adjust to it somehow, but I'm sure I won't, I don't think it ever really was the bug or the enthusiasm.
See what town meetings say, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah, town meeting, they're, they've always been fun. I used to, when I first went to my town meeting, I think I was 18 or 19, and at the time, sat in the back, and went for the entertainment, and boy, was it so entertaining. Oh, just what such an enjoyment I got out of that. But certainly different being on the stage than in front of it. That's certainly been a learning experience, and, I mean, by and large, I mean, I think, what an incredible learning experience this has been, the things I learned, and that you can't replace.
Don't be a stranger.
Of course not. Hopefully, I wasn't a stranger before.
I mean, after.
Or after, during, before, and, well, I take a break. So, I mean, thanks for, you know, thanks to everyone who had supported, who supported me, and for those who didn't, that's okay, too, because I don't always agree with everybody either, so you may not agree with my opinion, and vice versa, but I certainly respect everyone's right to have that opinion. So, that being said...
Way to go.
5.2. Town administrator updates and/or reports?
A couple of things. We mentioned indirectly the election next Tuesday, from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 PM. Voting will be here at Town Hall in the Great Hall. We hope we'll have a good turnout. This is a dual election, twin election, a twofer. Two for one.
A twofer.
Voting in the, in the primary elections for... Voting in the, in the primary elections for the Senate candidates to replace Senator Kerry and also our local election for selectmen, school committee members, Board of Health, et cetera. So, again, April thirtieth from seven in the morning until eight in the evening. A week after that, on May seventh is town meeting, seven o'clock in the evening, also here at, at town hall in the Great, Great Hall, so. Couple of other items, a couple of thank yous to, to some local schools. The Shobat Tech built, recently built and assembled for us a storage shed behind the library, something that we talked to them about last year. This is one of, a number of projects that they're going to do for us. They built it offsite at their, at their shop and assembled it onsite and finished it up last week and a nice looking piece of work. It, I think it is earthquake and tornado proof. It is, I was in there yesterday and it will withstand a lot. I think it will blow away before it breaks apart. It's very well constructed and so, thanks to Paul Jusom and, and Tony Sarah at the, at the Shobat Tech and all of the students who worked on, on that project. Also, last week, last Thursday, we had a number of students, I think sixteen students from Cushing Academy came out and did some landscaping for us over at the library, senior center and police station. They've done that for the last several years. It's coordinated, well, it's a, it's a day of giving that Cushing Academy does. They, they take the whole day off of class for all of their students. They do any number of different things from landscaping to, I think they do soup kitchens and things like that. It's a, it's a great program that the, that the school runs and we've been lucky enough over the last several years with the assistance of Gary Lorden to have a crew of students come out and do some landscaping for us. So, for the cost of a few yards of mulch, they've landscaped all the beds over at the library, senior center and, and police station, looks great. I'd also like to extend my thanks and congratulations to Nick and wish you well and I know that we haven't seen the last of you in some capacity or another. And a, a couple of vacancies that I'd like to just make people aware of that came, came about this week. We've got a vacancy on the Board of Water Commissioners and a vacancy on the Housing Authority. And so, at some future meeting, there will be joint meetings between the Board of Selectmen and those, the remaining members of those two bodies, the Board of Water Commissioners and the Housing Authority, to fill those slots. So, if anybody is interested in either of those positions, you can submit a volunteer response form or just show up on the night that we, that we schedule.
Well, now, because of course, I can't help myself, do you necessarily have to be a sheriff to apply for one of those?
You do not have to be a sheriff.
Okay, I wasn't sure. New older, otherwise.
No law enforcement experience necessary, so, and that's all I've got.
Okay. Five, five point three, review signed payroll warrant.
I make a motion, we review and sign payroll warrant out of session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five point four, review signed bills payable warrant.
I make a motion, we review and sign bills payable warrant out of session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item six, executive session. Enter executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, to discuss collective bargaining strategy and provide updates on the process of negotiations with unions representing police, fire, telecommunications and highway.
I make a motion, we go into executive session at eight thirty-five and adjourn directly from executive session.
Okay, this will call for a roll call vote?
Do we need to put all of the, the exemption stuff in the motion?
Oh, okay, you want me to amend my motion?
Sure.
I would like to amend my motion to include, enter executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, to discuss collective bargaining strategy and provide updates on the progress of negotiations with unions representing police, fire, telecommunications and highway.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, of course, this will call for a roll call vote?
Sulecio, aye.
Nick Dahlheimer, aye.
Bob Plamond, an aye. Night, folks.
Aye.